It is 6:30 on September 26, 2022, and I would like to call to order the public hearing of the Niles Main District Library Tentative Budget and Appropriation Ordinance 2202, a copy of which has been available for public inspection for at least 30 days. Notice of the public hearing has been publicized in the newspaper as required by law. Margaret, would you please call the roll? Would you please have a seat? You're disrupting the meeting, please have a seat. Margaret, would you?
Thank you. Trustee Durblek?
Here.
Trustee Schoenfeld?
Here.
Trustee McCullough?
Here.
Trustee Rosansky?
Hi, I'm here.
Without my microphone on, now can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Olson?
Here.
Trustee King?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Could we all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I would like to, I would like to read the rules for our, our meeting. As Board President and Presiding Officer, it is my responsibility to preserve and maintain decorum at all times during official meetings of the Library Board. As such, this Board will not tolerate outbursts-
Point of order.
-or interruptions during our meetings. I am asking that each member of the public respect that and to conduct yourself accordingly. Public participation and comment will be permitted consistent with library rules. Remarks shall be made from the speaker's podium only. Abusive and profane comments will not be permitted and will promptly be ruled out of order. If you persist, you will no longer be allowed to speak. The Board vests in me the authority to terminate the remarks of speakers who fail to adhere to the rules. All public comments should be addressed to the Board as a whole, and no comments should be addressed to individual Board members of the Board, library staff, or other members of the public body. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the public hearing. At this time, I will read the rules of procedure for the public hearing. This is a public hearing held for a specific purpose, and public comments must be limited to the specific topic of the public hearing, which is the Niles Main District Library Tentative Budget and Appropriation Ordinance 22-02. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak who wishes to speak, provided that the Board can and will limit repetitive and non-relevant commentary. Individuals will be called for public comments in the order of the sign-up sheet. After all names on the sign-up sheet have been called, those who did not sign up wishing to provide public comments will be called upon to speak. Okay, we will now open the public hearing for Ordinance 22-02, an ordinance providing for the tentative budget and appropriations of the Niles Main District Library, Cook County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending July 30, 2023. Margaret, would you please call the first person on the sign-up sheet?
Thank you. Elliot Osterman?
Hopefully it's working by now. Good evening, Board. This is Elliot Osterman of the Committee Against the Retention of the Three Snoozes. As usual, I have given a copy of these comments to your Executive Director for distribution to you so you can follow along. Listening to me and following along faithfully is my expectation. As usual, I am addressing my comments to the entirety of the Board, more on this later, and as usual, my nine declarative statements, namely, I will not be silenced nor interrupted, nor will we, nor will the community. I will remember this budget hearing circus, as will we in the community. I will vote on April 4, 2023, against the participants in this budget hearing circus of the three snoozes, Loretta, Shirley, and No, as will we, as will the community. Tonight is a budget hearing. One of the rules tonight is that comments are to be relevant to that subject. So let's begin. Let's talk about budgeting for staff. Why is budgeting for staff reduced? Because the number of FTE, full-time equivalents, is down. Why is that number down? The hiring freeze approved by the three snoozes, down from 73, which is a multiple of seven and nine, to 47, 49, a multiple of seven and seven. Despite multiple attempts from your Presiding Officer to get questions answered by the Executive Director regarding the need to determine budget to fulfill staff and staff responsibilities, having the answers provided by her then stating, "Those aren't the questions to which I need the answer," she refuses attempts to put the hiring freeze onto the agenda as new business. Of course, the Board can only budget to spend anticipated income. As your Treasurer once put it, "We can't spend it if we don't have it." In November, I predicted that with a reduced levy, the three snoozes would propose in early 2022 a further reduced budget for fiscal 2223 from the drastic cuts of 2122, as the income received from the levy would provide reduced income. Your Treasurer insists he can't spend money you haven't received. No surprise, that's exactly what happened this year. Bad news, snoozes and the rest of the Board, the entire six of you that are here, the tax bills are not coming out on time. Anticipated revenues will be delayed. If you can't spend it if you don't have it, how are you going to pay the bills? As near as I can tell, the Presiding Officer of this budget hearing circus has at least one of three problems. She can't hear, such as in a budget hearing. She can't listen, such as in a budget hearing, or she refuses to believe what other people are telling her, whether in a budget determination or budget hearing, whether it's the public, her paid staff, employed consultants, or state-elected officials. The rules apply to her, unless, of course, she doesn't want them to, like point of order, for example. Watch out, community, Lucy is about to move your football again. I'd like to welcome Umar Kadir to the Board and this budget hearing, maybe even given a chance to work on budgeting, hopefully soon. Thank you.
Hi, um, so can I talk about getting rid of the teen center downstairs? Okay. Hi, I am a student that goes to Culver School from across the street. You may be wondering why a child is at the microphone, but I don't think it would be fair if I wasn't here. After all, I am a teen and this is affecting me negatively. The Niles Teen Center downstairs is where many great people spend their time for enjoyment and homework. If we try and get rid of the Niles Teen Center downstairs, not only will it take a lot of money, and it will upset the balance that us teens have. We only have one room to do homework and other necessities. The teen center is like another home for many others, not just including me. I go there every day and I see new people and new faces all being united in one area. We bond down there, we live down there, and I'm not sure I could live without the teen center in the basement. So I am only asking one thing, that you don't get rid of the teen center. It is, down in the basement, it is mostly adults, except for one room, and the adults already have the whole upstairs and most of the basement. And it will affect the budget negatively. Thank you.
My name is Maisy. The Board, first, can I talk about more so of the new trustee?
I'm sorry?
The new trustee.
That's not a budget matter, though. You could talk about anything that has to do with the budget.
It is kind of around the budget. The Board hasn't been able to agree on basically anything for over a year, and that includes the budget. But on one very small thing, maybe, but the six Board members have two opposite opinions. Adding the seventh will let them to be able to agree on things such as the budget. Doesn't everyone want a secure future for our library? Thank you.
I just wanted to remind the Board that they are elected Board members and that they should be acting in the best interest of their constituents, which are in this room. And so I just wanted to remind them that if they can't act in the best interest of their constituents, maybe they should step down or abstain from voting.
My name is Carter Esterling. I'm an attorney and a Niles resident. This is my daughter Genevieve standing here with me. I am by no means a budgetary expert, and I'm not standing here before you to talk nuts and bolts of that, but I do want to say I'm here to talk in favor of the most expansive budget possible for the Niles Main Library District. I think it is one of the greatest resources, if not the greatest, that this village has to offer. We moved here in 2017 from Chicago, where we were starved for these kinds of resources. And so to see someone attempting to take that away is really deflating, and I think a long-term horrible look for the village. Secondly, I've recently started looking at some of the legal bills that the Board has accrued in the past few years, and I would like to ask that the Board cease the habit of redacting essentially everything in those bills, such that the actual client, which is the public, cannot tell what any of that money is being spent for. Not, not every billing entry was, was off-base, but a lot of those, I was looking at them, at them, wondering what possibly could have been the legal issue that this person was spending public money on, to speak to an attorney about. If I were to get those types of bills in a corporation as a risk manager and executive and pay them, I'd be fired for paying them. So I think that there needs to be some attention brought to that issue, and we intend to do it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Genevieve. I'm eight years old. I just want to say, can you please raise money for the library so me and my friends can all have fun here?
I feel stabbed that you are lowering the funding for all the Niles, for all the librarians who work here. These are the people who run the, who help so many students like me find what they're looking for, and maybe even help them find their own identity. If you need more money, then start a fundraiser. I'm sure so many people are willing to donate to the library to serve the people.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Roberto Botello. I'm a 20-year resident. I'm just going to share quickly a personal story in that the funding of this library over the course of this 20 years allowed me to use the services here. That funding allowed my family to live a productive life, thanks to the many services that are here. I stand here in support of funding that will continue that level of services to the community. I hear from many of my neighbors saying, "We're losing the services at this library. Why is that?" And that just leads me to say that the Board here has yet to reach funding that's consistent to what we've had in the past, and I've heard many reasons why, but simply just to remind the Board that in order to continue to grow this community, in order to maintain the investment that this library provides for our community, funding should be adequate to the point that you, you are able to continue the services, have adequate number of staff here, and overall, increase the hours. Without those hours, it's very difficult, regardless of whether you're a young person, a young patron, someone like myself, or somebody elderly that's relying on the services that the library has. Encourage you to please adequately fund the services to continue to grow the library and not decline the services. Thank you, everyone.
Pam Wolfe?
My name is Pam Wolfe. My pronouns are she, they. I have listened to a lot of the budget discussions, and a lot of what was brought up for decreasing the budget was people on fixed incomes can't afford. I have talked to people on fixed incomes, and the lowering of the budget works out to about one meal a year going out, one meal. On the other hand, the services that the library provides, or used to provide before they were cut, actually benefited most people on fixed incomes. Internet that they could not afford, job-seeking services that they might not have access to, passport photos, books in other languages for those who, bilingual books for those who have come to this country and are trying to learn. Not only that, those who are immigrants, or who are children of immigrants, who want to actually both speak English, but also keep their roots. Now, I remember that was one of the things that was said, "We should cut that because, you know, we don't need it, it's not essential to fund." Teen Underground was mentioned. That was something that, you know, teens need a space. Teens are having problems right now with COVID. Their rates of anxiety and suicide have skyrocketed. To put them in a place with a bunch of little kids is not appropriate for either them or the little kids, and it's not a cost saver because that requires remodeling. Remodeling is expensive. Things that were taken off, the roof, repairs, that, that, that was a penny wise, pound foolish, except it's more like pound idiotic. We are lucky that we have had so little damage so far. These are ridiculous things, and they seem small, but they all add up. Not having the bathrooms cleaned, because, you know, there is nothing more fun than getting norovirus from uncleaned bathrooms, because we know that it's really, really great to be able to have them done during hours where the business is open, because, you know, it's nice to walk in and you can't go in there because the floor is wet. Yeah, no, it doesn't work. They need to be cleaned outside of working hours. There's reasons for that. These are just small things, but staff, that's the biggest thing, staff. We have heard people begging, staff members begging, half of the Board begging, "Please, please, please, give us more staff and the hiring freeze." And time and time again, the President of the Board keeps asking for more information, more information, because she cannot actually approve budget money for more staff unless she knows. However, I listened just last week to that self-same person agree to pay a bill for a lawyer that she did not even know what the bill was for. She did not even know if she had talked to that lawyer. Now, I have nothing against lawyers, but, well, I mean, not all lawyers, but we need to be funding the library, not lawyers. Okay? We need to be able to read what is going on. You are our employees. We put you here. We can fire you. And believe me, you are not getting a good performance review. So just so you know that, you should not be redacting everything that costs money, 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 money. We have staff here who actually have training in that. We don't need to be paying money, 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 money for that. I bet that we've spent at least, at least a meal per resident, a meal per taxpayer in lawyer fees over the past year, and not even the necessary ones. There are necessary lawyer fees, but I'm talking about the unnecessary ones. Let's redact an entire page. Let's, oh, I don't know, let's sue another Board member? Let's block, let's block a Board member from being sworn in, even though this public people here, this district begged for that law? So, I mean, you're, you're really doing a bad job. This budget is a travesty. It honestly should not be passed. And honestly, the disgust I am feeling at having to be doing this another year in a row, because three people feel that their petty ideologies are more important than what the body public wants, is freaking ridiculous. And that is not all I have to say, but all that I am going to politely say. I hope you all have a pleasant evening. Kick some butt, guys. Thank you.
Elizabeth Lynch?
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Lynch. My pronouns are she, her. Budgets can be intimidating. They seem complicated. There are spreadsheets and percentages and strange words like appropriations. They're confusing to the average person even in the best of circumstances. And with the discord and chaos on this Board, the budget process has been even more complicated and confusing than normal. It can be easy to get lost in this number or that percentage, so I want to help you, especially you three, see the big picture. Let me tell you, as a patron and a community member and a taxpayer and a voter, what I've taken away from all those hours of chaotic discussion about the budget, what I saw. What I saw was staff pleading, begging on my behalf and on behalf of the rest of the community. It was clear that they were sincere in their pleas, that what motivates staff is doing great work, helping people like me and my family and everyone else in the Niles Main District. I saw staff asking for the resources they need to do their job and nothing more. And it was not hard, as a patron and a community member and a taxpayer and a voter, for me to see that they were right. Their explanations about computer software, clean bathrooms, books, and staffing were not confusing or complicated. Of course, the library needs clean bathrooms. Of course, the library needs enough staff to cover desks. This is simple, basic stuff. And if it wasn't obvious, the staff backed up their points with outside experts, data, research, and state guidelines. But none of this has been enough for three of the trustees. Not the passionate and informed explanations from staff, all the data and research, not community members showing up meeting after meeting to beg this Board to fund the library, not common sense. So let me try to make this even simpler, even clearer, for the trustees who still can't seem to understand. This isn't just about a line on a budget. It's about the kind of community we want to live in. Are we a community that cares about people? Do we value our children, our seniors, our workers? Is this the great place to raise a family that we claim to be? Do we believe in investing in the future? Are we proud of our diversity and committed to understanding our neighbors better? Do we value learning, early literacy, art, access to information, and togetherness? If we want the answer to be yes to those questions, then it's not hard to see what the right answer is. It should be obvious. Before this current Board, we had one of the best, most well-respected, respected and innovative libraries in the country, and we got all of that with the lowest per capita spending in our area. The library was the best deal around, saving my family personally thousands of dollars every year. It is obvious that budget cuts mean cuts to services, that I won't be getting more for less, that I will lose programs, books, and technology that save my family money. And maybe most importantly, it's obvious that this budget cuts deep across our most cherished values. An investment in this library is an investment in the community. Do not let greed or politics be your defining value. Do not put your friends, or your personal bank account, or Jeff Bezos before your neighbors. The budget on the table- The budget on the table right now is not one that you make for a community you actually want to live in. It doesn't reflect our values. Throw it out with the trash because that's what it is and look again at the budget proposed by the staff. But this time, act like you live here and you actually care about your neighbors.
James Su?
Good evening, my name is James Su, Niles resident. But a couple of points I wanted to ask about in regards to the budget. Number one, I'm obviously here in support of the library. When you support a library, you support the subject matter experts who are the workers here. So listen to them, follow their budget. Number two, I, is that a lawyer sitting next to Carolyn? I wonder how much he's costing right now just to attend this event and listen to the public? To my third point, I do want to address one specific aspect about the budget as it's proposed right now and if that's in professional development. It's my understanding that there were two types of budgets initially proposed during this whole process. My understanding is Joe proposed next to zero dollars for professional development. Trustee Becky Keen over here proposed about $28,000, which is more aligned with what the workers are demanding and which is historically speaking closer to what's been approved in the past. Here's the thing about professional development. Our society is ever-changing. I don't need to remind you guys of the accelerating changes in technology and the cultural shifts that are happening in our society today. Being that the library is a center of community, it is a center of community despite what others may think. It is imperative that our workers are current with all of the changes going on. And that's where professional development comes in. So I urge you all, I understand you guys are voting on the budget tonight, to reconsider how much you're spending for professional development. Listen to the workers, give them what they need. Knowledge will trickle down from the workers down to the community for a more vibrant community. And my final point, it's more of a general point, but I was here last week and I was waiting outside, waiting for the meeting to begin, and I saw Suzanne, Suzanne Schoenfeld, the secretary over there, walk in vocally complaining about, this is ridiculous in regards to the protests that was going outside of the building. And Suzanne, when you walked past me, I told you that you had no one to blame but yourself. You have no one to blame but yourself. So I'm here to express this to you three publicly, to Carolyn, Suzanne and Joe. Carolyn especially, when you complain about the bickering that comes from this side of the board here, when you guys complain about the protests from the community, when you guys are complaining over the perceived misinformation in social media and in media between the published letters, that's on you guys. This whole problem for the past year and a half, you want to resolve a problem? You don't put Band-Aids on. You get to the root cause of a problem. The root cause of the problem is on page six of the Illinois Public Trustee Manual. In that, it specifically states that your main role is to be advocates for the library. Is to be advocates for the library. But instead, you guys have completely subverted that role for whatever reason, whether it's a personal grievance with your past experience within the board, Carolyn, or a political grievance against spending and taxation, Joe. You've completely subverted that role to turn into mercenaries against taxation and spending. That's not what you do. If you have a complaint over taxation, Joe, take it across the street. Go to the Village of Niles, make your voice heard against them. To bully the library is not the way. So I urge you all to just reconsider your roles. And if you can't do that, and honestly, for the past year and a half, I've seen all of the expletives going on, you violate all forms of trust. I personally cannot trust each of you to do your jobs, the three of you. So I urge you all to reconsider the budget, give what the staff wants and for you three to resign immediately.
Kathy? I think it's Steichen? Steichen? My apologies.
That's okay. Hi, I'm Kathy Steich and I'm the staff representative from AFSMI Council 31 assigned to work with our employees here at the library. Thank you. Why did employees here at the library form a union? And what does that have to do with the budget? The employees I have met are exuberant in their love of this library and this community. Many see this work as a mission. In the battles of the last couple of years, to try to salvage the library from the desperate attempts to slice it up through cruel austerity measures, many employees have hardened their desire to see this library restored, accountable to the community in which it resides and which it provides real services. The library budget is a sign of whether or not we are on the road to that restoration. We are the union, we are the employees, we are the library. We are not an excuse for this board to not function. We are not an excuse for you to not pass a fully funded budget. We are not standing in your way. We will continue to do our work here at the library and here at the bargaining table. We will continue to fight for the best agreement and negotiations for this library, the community and for all library employees that have dedicated their careers to this institution. We will be here to provide services to the community directly on the front lines and we will not be silent. We have been in negotiations since March of 2022. We've had around a dozen sessions, each of about two and two and a half hours in length. We feel that we should have made a great deal more progress than we have. Our sincere position is that the trustees should do everything in your power to pass a budget that fully funds the library and make sure that your library negotiators fully view the frontline staff as partners, genuine partners in this process to make the library work. We want it to be the best that it can possibly be. We deserve a fair and reasonable contract. We will not waive our rights under the law. We will not agree to language in the contract that undermines employees' rights to struggle and to have their voices heard in their struggle for mutual aid and protection and better conditions at work. We ask you to restore the library to full vibrant potential and not to forget the libraries, our AFSMI and the library is run by members of the union.
Dean M. Omovich? I'm probably butchering it, I apologize.
Hello, my name is Dean and I'm 13.
Put it up so we can hear you a little more.
Hello, my name is Dean and I'm 13 and I've been coming to this library for a while now. And the defunding, I don't think it's good because so many kids come here for resources, to hang out with their friends, to do their homework. And it's just a horrible decision to defund that and stop us from having all the things we have currently.
Cynthia Kader?
Hi, I am a 22-year, my family has been a resident of Niles for 22 years. And I would ask that you consider me an average member of the community, the kind of community member who has never spoken at a board meeting before. The kind of community member who hasn't been coming to board meetings for very long because she's busy raising her family, working, taking care of her family, was not aware of what was going on here until fairly recently. Since finding out what was going on here at the library and being inspired by the folks that I've heard here tonight and at the rally, I was inspired to sign up to speak. I did not prepare any comments. This is not something that comes easily to me, but I do want to second all of the comments made by the folks in support of the library here tonight. My children grew up using this library. It was an incredible joy to bring them here and see them gain in confidence as they learned to walk up to the library youth services desks by themselves and ask for help. They will have more confidence than I have had growing up. I didn't have those opportunities. And, you know, since then, they have, they have their entire youth and young adulthood use this library. My daughter, well, I'm not, I'm not supposed to talk about this tonight, I guess, but she, she now, she did the reading club. My, my kids did the reading club throughout their whole youth. And my daughter volunteered for the reading club this summer. She tried to, this is more to the point of the budget, she tried to sign up for a program here at the library this summer. She's not someone who's comfortable in a lot of spaces. She is very comfortable here. And she tried to sign up to do a program. She's a sophomore in high school now. And yes, she is someone who is still not comfortable in a lot of places. And she relies on this library. She tried to sign up for a program and it wasn't available. And I was told it wasn't available due to staffing cuts. So again, I second everything that everyone said here. I very much would like to see the budget proposed by the people who know what they're doing, who have the experience. The, the, not people who were elected just to slash and cut because that sounds good. That isn't good for our community. The library is a place for our community to gather and grow together. This is an incredible, incredible community. I am so pleased to have raised my family here and still be benefiting from this community. We intend to stay here and through our retirement, our children come back here. And we very much want to see this library continue to be a strong resource here in the Niles Main area. Thank you very much.
David Sutherland?
Hello, my name is David Sutherland and my pronouns are he/him/his. I was recently inspired by a CBS piece on libraries called, Welcome to the Library of the 21st Century. Community member Barbara Mendelson recently made a public comment to this board, also inspired by this piece. It showcased paradigm-shifting possibilities of libraries. All the time and effort spent defending our library from being dismantled has diminished the aspirations of the Niles Main District Library. I'm sure this is intentional. So for a second, let's look past these attacks into the future for our community. It is time to start imagining again. Let's start hoping again. The Niles community, in its desperation, has just voted to give the mayor a blank check to do something, to do anything, to have a place this community can congregate. But an updated mall that requires money to enjoy isn't accessible to everyone. What if we made this library more accessible and opened a branch in an area with the least accessibility? What if we provided more off-site programs in remote places like grocery stores, laundromats, restaurants, more parks, et cetera? What if we had a cafe? What if we had a performance space? What if we had a tool lending library? A seed library? What if we archive stories of our local community elders? What if we added a whole new floor to allow for these enhancements and turned that parking lot eyesore into a beautiful community space? What if the Niles Main District Library became the cultural hub that our community deserves? And I know the best what ifs will come from the most experienced to work here day in and day out, our librarians. I'm sure they would relish the opportunity to be free to do what they do best instead of burdened by an oppressive and hostile regime. The possibilities of what the Niles Main District Library can be lies in the hearts and minds of these experts employed here. Timothy Healy, president of the New York Public Library, said, "The most important asset of any library goes home at night, the library staff." They are the library and that is why they are the ones under attack. This is a disgrace and an embarrassment. We need to get back to a time of building, not destroying. We need to be human again and celebrate the humanity of others. Let's honor the intentions and toil of the Niles Main District Library founders and keep this library a pillar of a thriving community. Please budget in and allocate the resources we entrusted to you to retain and add the human specialists and workers required to grow our library and our community. Thank you, Becky. Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Patty, for your service resisting this attack. You are on the right side of history. You weren't trained for dealing with this absurd reality, but we see you doing your best to stave off the worst. Years from now, your names will be remembered as those who helped save Niles Library. Thank you.
Mary Ann Roan?
Hello, board members. My name is Mary Ann Roan. I work in KidSpace and I have the greatest honor to serve the best patrons in the entire universe right here in Niles Main District Library. My personal pronouns are she/her. Our union is helping us to make this library stronger, stronger for the entire Niles Main District Library community because we want to achieve higher levels of literacy which will bring us to peace and harmony. This is an important budget investment for the library future because there are things that make us better, stronger as a community, such as this great library. And these are, these are things that are unbreakable. In KidSpace, we celebrate books in different languages every day. This is an important part of our budget because we have a beautiful world language collection that we share with many readers. Also, our world language collection in KidSpace is, is notable for other libraries. They send their patrons here to Niles Main District Library to access our world language collection in KidSpace. We even get phone calls from other libraries. How did you order those books in Arabic? How, how did you find this fantastic picture book in Korean language about the life cycles of butterflies? We cannot believe how many questions and how many readers that love to read in different languages, even if their first language is an English language. We are thriving in a community where we celebrate diversity and languages every single day. And those readers are awesome and they are our future leaders and they need lots of materials, which requires excellent budget. When you hold a book in your hand and it speaks to your heart because it is just family languages, it places great importance on belonging, on your culture is beautiful. You're saying, yes, you're beautiful, you belong here. Here's a book with your home language. You, the reader, belong here and we were going to help you do that, the librarians. Right now, it is Spanish Heritage Month and Ms. Rosie, who is working right now in KidSpace, is celebrating and helping us all love and appreciate this beautiful celebration in KidSpace. Ms. Rosie has planned special programs for Spanish Heritage Month and we are all helping her achieve these beautiful goals. However, we need money, money to purchase new books, materials for our future patrons. We need to continue to build our Niles Main District Library collection because this makes us awesome. I just want to remind everybody, everybody, our future leaders, teachers, doctors, senators, lawyers, board members of the future and presidents are coming from our KidSpace and it's our job to make sure that we have books for them so they can grow and learn. This is what makes us awesome, our community. We need a beautiful budget to reflect us. Thank you.
Rosemary Politsky or?
The Save My Library campaign was a ruse, and let me tell you why. The reason why is because three new board members came on board, and here we are again a year later now. Remember that first year on the budget? Pretty brutal. Because what they did was, they took on this new position, the three that are accused of snoozing do not snooze at all. What they did was, they took on every department. They looked at every dollar that was coming through the library. And they determined that at best, what was needed as far as money is concerned, and what their duty is as trustees, is not to garner the vote, and it's not to praise the people, it's to be prudent with taxpayers' funds and accomplish the goals that they're required to by statute. And when they looked at it, they came up with a budget of $5,290,000. Only in Cook County, Illinois, a library is an absolute fortune. Have you ever seen $1,100,000 in one place, speaking of what you see? That's what this library budget that's currently in front of us is going to spend to operate. I've never seen $1,100,000. I heard $28,000. We kind of left all the other out. Now, that $5.29 million last year, can we get a library that operates under $1 million every 60 days? Oh, no. Oh, no. No, absolutely not. And the union says absolutely not to $1 million every 60 days. Well, they came up with a budget of $5,290,000, thanks to a lot of hard work and effort meetings by the new trustees compelling the longtime sitting trustees. And what happened? Last year, at this very time a year ago, there was a last minute amendment, as we were all sitting here giving our public comments. Suddenly, a last minute amendment brought that budget up to $6,290,000, another cool million dollars. And then that passed. This year, what it was sought was by the three that had been around forever, is $7.3 million. Unbelievable, because it adopts the million dollar monies from last year, that sudden amendment, plus another million too. But that's a little higher than the $28,000 I've heard of, and of someone talking about budgets they haven't even read, and they don't know what the numbers are. So what did this board do? This board came up with, okay, we'll keep that extra million from last year on top of the $5.29 million, so we'll be back at $6.29 million, which is level from last year. Ouch. And we'll throw on another $300,000 to $6,600,000 a year to operate this library. And then I'm hearing dirty bathrooms. I've been in the bathrooms. They're not dirty. I'm hearing, what is the goal? The goal is because you must love the people. So you got to throw on another million on the pile, okay? And what I'm hearing is, we want to have an employee for every desk. These are government jobs with government pensions, with government benefits to hit the taxpayer. And you know, at the last meeting, people talk about taxes. There's people that just don't know what they're talking about. A homeowner's exemption, of course you get a homeowner's exemption if you own your home. It goes on your second installment of your tax bill. It reduces your overall liability by a certain amount from all the government bodies that are nailing your house or your business. But you still have to pay the bill to the library. Of course you do. But there are those that get exemptions in addition to that, where they don't have to pay the bill toward the library. What happens with that amount? That amount gets spread out amongst all those that are still paying. Your neighbor's picking up that difference. I'm saying that a library that's going to cost us $1,100,000 every 60 days is too high. It's too much. And all the flowery things we say, and all the children we push up here, and we say to go ahead and say, because the library is not going to be funded, all the booing that's done doesn't change the numbers. And somebody's got to pay that bill. And you know who pays that bill? I do. I pay that bill. Now, but there's a child that gave a very good idea here tonight. There's a child that gave a very good idea tonight, fundraising. If you want to pay more for the library, pay it. Write a check. Give it to the library. You want to spend more than $1,100,000 every 60 days? Reach into your own pocket and get out of mine. Because I so happen to know, these services that we have, I'm not paying the regular price form. I'm being way overcharged. And when the union gets done, they're going to try to have double the employees we have now, at a minimum. And double, and what do you hear? What do you hear? What do you hear? Payroll. Payroll. That's all it is. Government jobs. This is presented to you by the Save My Wallet movement from local taxes. And I'm asking you to consider this budget, and I'm asking you to, at minimum, reduce this budget back to at least last year's $6,290,000. And by the way, that lowest per capita per family that we have, that's gone now, thanks to Niles, our Niles government increasing our levy, hitting us with an additional levy in taxes of 88%, then kicking us back a tax rebate, where now our taxes are up 63% or another $14 million, at a time when families, over this last year, just their regular expenses alone due to inflation, each family here in Niles Main is paying another $469 out of their net every month, just for groceries and gas. This is appalling. And I think if we, I'm asking this board, I'm not here for a popularity vote. I'm here to stop overcharging the people that pay the bills. $1,100,000 every 60 days is way more than enough. Thank you.
Jabez Patterson?
Hello, everyone. My name is Jabez Patterson. My pronouns are he, him, his. I love this place. I love the staff. I love the community. And I wouldn't be here today without the Niles Main District Library. But unfortunately, the last year and a half has been stressful for the community and the library. But today, I'm here to talk about your greatest asset, and that's the library staff. Where do I begin? We are so lucky to have the amazing staff that work in this library. The staff is supportive, kind, innovative, and most of all, inspiring. Library staff has our best interests when it comes to material selection, programs, events, community outreach, and so much more. But under this board, the staff has been treated disrespectfully by members of this board. Due to the neglect and mistreatment of library staff, we're now down to 65 employees. At this time last year, we had 91 employees. And before COVID, I believe we had over 110 employees. Our staff is tired of, oh, I'm sorry. Our staff is tired of the neglect and abuse from this board. They had to pick up more responsibilities, offer fewer programs, had to provide less staffing at staff, I'm sorry, had to provide less staffing at the service desk. And had to limit community outreach to the community at one point feared that they would lose their jobs. The patron services department has been suffering the most since this temporary hiring freeze. Let me tell you something about our, I'm sorry, let me tell you something about our patron services department. They are the heart and soul of this organization. I always commend their work ethic to this library. Patron services are the first hello you receive when you walk into the building and the last ma when you leave. They shovel all of our books and materials that are returned daily. But most importantly, did you know that they're passport agents? And they make revenue for this library. Here are the facts. In August, they processed 156 passports, which is equivalent to $5,460 on average. So let's times that by 12 for a year round revenue for the service, again, on average, is over $65,000. Unfortunately, under this temporary hiring freeze, we're now down to 16 employees for this department. This leaves the library with 11 passport agents, which means no time to train passport agents. We can't serve the high demand and need. And the worst part is, we lose on the potential to earn more money from this service. This department is worn out, and also because they're worn in. Yet they bring the best work and get the job done. It's uncomfortable to watch these board meetings repeatedly, time and time again, to see the staff beg and plead with you to fund this library for projects and to lift this outlandish temporary hiring, I'm sorry, to lift this outlandish temporary hiring freeze, which is now 16 months, and has caused more damage to our beautiful library. Due to our temporary hiring freeze, we're unable to replace staff members who would help this organization bring 21st century ideas, programs, material suggestions to our community. Let me give you a small notification of the damage this board has done. We were a five star library. Now we're a laughing stock in our community and libraries across the country. We're in Illinois. We have two of the best library schools in the country. After the embarrassment you've caused into this community, do you think newly minted librarians or aspiring library workers want to work here? I'll answer that question. The answer is no. So tonight, I'm not here to beg to this board to lift the hiring freeze. I'm demanding you to do that. I'm demanding it for the sake of us, the staff, and also for the community. We have suffered enough from the members of the board's behavior. Our staff is unable to take a day off or take a mental health day to recover from the continuous demand of service. Our staff is people. I'll repeat that again. Our staff is people. They have responsibilities, families, dreams, passions outside of this library. Our staff shouldn't have to decide whether to work or make sacrifices. We are no longer a library that values people, ideas, growth, and accessibility. Honestly, a library is the foundation for a strong community. Instead, we value money over people and ego over compassion. Niles Main, we're not in the 1960s or the 1970s anymore. We're beyond the years of shushing. Libraries are no longer a warehouse full of books. Libraries are a makerspace of ideas and a community's living room where all thoughts and ideas are welcome. And people of all ages and races belong. We should be focusing on technology, mental health services, teens, job readiness skills. We should be focused on anti-racism and equity in our community and in the library. We should be hiring more people of color that reflects our community. Remember, representation matters. And I'll repeat that again, representation matters. Don't believe me? Or do you think the vision I have for this library is ludicrous? Just go to a different library, and you can see the difference for yourself. Or my personal preference? Just drive to another library southwest, and I'll give you a tour. Thank you so much.
Donna Block?
Good evening. I'm Donna Block. My pronouns are she/her. I am a teen services librarian and school liaison with the Niles Main District Library, a job that I have held for 15 years. I have some prepared remarks, but some staff did some number crunching on like that $1 million and some odd dollars that you were quoting earlier that's spent every 60 days. If you break it down per person for the residents of our district, it comes out to $9.32 per person for that 60 days. Now, if you check out a book, if you check out a DVD, if you check out a video game, if you attend a program, if you do anything involved with the library, you're going to more than make that money back. All right. So on to my prepared remarks about the budget.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I have the floor now. You had your turn. It is my turn.
Carabota, pound him.
Okay, no outbursts from the attendees and trustee Rosansky. Please don't feed into this.
By telling him his time is up, I shouldn't feed in?
Yes, I'll take care of it. Please be quiet.
Normally, you let your friends talk.
Take care of it.
Normally, you let your friends talk.
So can we proceed?
Sure. So I'd like to talk tonight about increasing staff salaries and the $225,000 increase to staff spending that was proposed by some board members on the meeting of July 20th and then rejected at that same meeting. At that meeting, Board President Carolyn Dervlich said, and I quote, "Staffing issues will be discussed in the union negotiations," and that's where some of this belongs. It's not our decision. The truth is, the board, you, the board, do not have to wait until union negotiations to increase spending for staff. You could do it right here in this room, right now, tonight. All you have to do is propose and vote on an amendment. You do not need to wait for union negotiations to give our staff members a raise. The fact is that we've entered union negotiations because they are the only tool at our disposal to force you to compromise with us. It doesn't have to be that way. You could make the whole process very easy. The cost of living adjustment for 2022, which was announced October 13th, 2021, was 5.9%, the highest it's been in 40 years. This is a real world increase in the cost of living as measured by the Consumer Price Index. Without an appropriate cost of living adjustment to our pay over the past year, we, the staff, have essentially taken a pay cut. So I'm asking you to rectify that tonight. You don't have to stop at 5.9%, of course. You could increase our wages by 10% if you like, or 15%. There's nothing stopping you from doing that. The COLA increase for 2023 will, I believe, be announced next month, and without any increase, staff will again be taking a pay cut. If appealing to your conscience or your sense of decency will sway you, then perhaps you are in need of a reality check. How willing do you think staff will be to work for an employer who neglects them year after year? Now, for me personally, daycare has been like the biggest increase. Even in the years when we've gotten like a 3% or more raise, it gets eaten up by daycare immediately with the yearly daycare increase. Don't even get me started on food. Growing kids eat a lot. Food prices have continued to go up. The amount I spent on food has gone up. So, yeah, I've not seen any kind of pay raise, even when we were getting like over 3% each year. How willing do you think staff, how do you think the hiring process for a new full time maintenance services supervisor went earlier this year? Do you think that was successful? I'm just telling you, that's kind of how things are going to go if you continue to treat staff the way you have. When you've reached the point where you can't keep a desk staff or the toilet's flushing, what are you going to do then? Thank you.
Ms. Rosemary, did you wish to speak?
Yes and no, but I'll say yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Rosemary Policki. I'm a resident of Niles for 46 years. And I will, if you did not know, I stand very strongly on the side of supporting the Niles Library. I haven't been to many of these meetings. I came in the beginning, and then I followed budget discussions and things that were going on via the newspaper. And I felt that it was important tonight to come, because I feel that this board had reached a point where it could not come to agreement on anything. And that people who spoke eloquently tonight, youngsters who had courage, who spoke here better than I am doing right now, because I'm a little bit nervous, gave their time and effort to come. And really, what they heard...
So, yeah, I've not seen any kind of pay raise even when we were getting like over 3% each year. How willing do you think staff? How do you think the hiring process for a new full-time maintenance services supervisor went earlier this year? Do you think that was successful? I'm just telling you, that's kind of how things are going to go if you continue to treat staff the way you have. When you've reached the point where you can't keep a desk staff or the toilet's flushing, what are you going to do then? Thank you.
Ms. Rosemary, did you wish to speak?
Yes and no, but I'll say yes.
Thank you.
Rosemary Paliki. I'm a resident of Niles for 46 years. And I will, if you did not know, I stand very strongly on the side of supporting the Niles Library. I haven't been to many of these meetings. I came in the beginning, and then I followed budget discussions and things that were going on via the newspaper. And I felt that it was important tonight to come because I feel that this board had reached a point where it could not come to agreement on anything. And that people who spoke eloquently tonight, youngsters who had courage, who spoke here better than I am doing right now, because I'm a little bit nervous, gave their time and effort to come. And really, what they heard was a lot of support from the people sitting here. But they also heard vitriolic statements made and attacks made, which I can't believe this continues to happen in Niles. I was a board of trustee member on the village board. And we certainly had some hard times during the years that I was on that board. But we were able to come together, bring this around to the budget. The only way a budget can be passed, I believe, is if this board follows the state law and accepts the appointment of the trustee that was named. I really don't like people applauding, to be honest with you. Because I, and I don't mean to criticize you, but I think this is so serious. This is not a popularity contest. This was a chance, and perhaps still is a chance, for the board to move forward. Whatever decisions are made when there are seven of you are not going to be all in favor of one side or the other. It never should have been that way. That wasn't intention. But you would have someone who's going to be able to move this board forward and save the Niles Library. The Niles Library is not lights and walls and chairs. It's the people who took the time to come here tonight and the people who couldn't take the time to come during all those nights and speak for their love of the library. I don't know if it's possible to stop the injunction. If it is, I beg you to do that out of the goodness and wiseness of your heart. And I personally know you. You know that. I know a couple of you personally. I just think that I'm ashamed to be standing here and having to almost beg you to do what the law says you were supposed to do. If you want the Niles Library to survive, get that seventh trustee here. Move forward. You win some, you lose some. But we move forward, and we do what's best for the Niles Library. Thank you.
That's everyone who has signed up to speak.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak that didn't sign up? Please do.
I have spoken many times before. You didn't seem to get my message. I don't know why you're not getting it. I felt I was clear. Why you can't work together and why some people make fun of children and people here? That's an insult. That lady, I don't know, forgot your name. But she's right. We're just not here for ourselves. We care. We care about the library. We care about the children. We care about all people that use this library. Look into your hearts. How can you hear all this and not feel that you should spend the money on a library? A library is one of your greatest assets, treasures. I heard that. Did you? I heard that. Greatest treasures you can have in a community to build community. People come here, yes, to get books, to learn. Readers, did you hear, are leaders. They're going to be your future presidents, what have you. Yes, you should spend the money. It is well-spent. When you're spending it on education, informing, as they say, innovating, it is well-spent. And as far, as far as playing games, this was the biggest, I was a phys ed teacher. This was the biggest game I've ever seen when you wouldn't let that seventh one on the board. How you could play a game like this? That's setting the library way back. You are, you, stopping progress. Absolutely. Let's move forward. If I make mistakes, I make mistakes. I rectify them. I look into my heart, and I change my mind. I try to harmonize with people. I tried to work together when I was a teacher. We didn't all agree either. But we learned how to give and take. That's what sports is, too. You're not always going to win, but have an open mind. Please have an open mind. Your minds, some of you have been closed. I don't know how they can be so closed with all these people and all the great things they said, except for one. And as far as spending money, people are worth more than money. This is values. This is values. And if you don't want to spend the money in Niles, then why don't you move to another place?
Excuse me. Please don't address the attendees. Thank you.
All right. But I'm all in favor of spending the money, using it wisely. Your greatest asset is your people, who will be the leaders. Please spend the money, the roof, the children, everyone that uses the library. And if I remember correctly, also, and you all heard it, that man that came in from a home, and he said, "These men look forward to getting that," what is it, the Bookmobile, "so that they have something to do. They can't come to the library." If that was you, I think you'd want it. Thank you.
Are there any other individuals that would like to speak? Any other people outside?
I can hear you.
Okay. No? Okay. Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing. Um, let's see. I need to make a motion to... Could, to close? To adjourn, yeah, I'm doing that now. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay. Margaret, would you please call a roll?
Thank you. Trustee Dervlich?
Yes.
Trustee Schoenfeld?
Yes.
Trustee McCullough?
Yes.
Trustee Rosansky?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Keane?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting passes. This hearing has ended at 7:45 PM.